I call the Lancaster Board of Education meeting to order. Please stand for a, well, I'll explain in a second, hopefully. Please stand for the pledge to the flag and a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence today is for Evelyn Banning, a bus driver from 1981 through 1994, who passed away on July 28th, 2017. Thank you. Probably wondering where everyone is. Mr. Uteig was at a conference and was excused. Mr. Sage is going to be late, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, we were told. And as of now, we don't know where Mr. Jackson is, so, he's been called, so. Four point oh presentations. There are none. Five point oh correspondence. We got a letter from Wendy Dobbins, received July 11th, 2017. We also received a letter from Janice Ryan, received on July 19th, 2017. And several notices of petition pursuant to the real property tax law, which we received throughout the last month, so. Approval of minutes, six point one. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the organizational meeting on July 13th? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Ladies, I think you may be busy today with the seconding. Appreciate it. Seven point oh, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Thank you. Anybody from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Anybody from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Seeing none. Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, eight point oh, board reports, eight point one. Anybody from the board wish to report? Okay, seeing none. Nine point oh, superintendent's administrative report?
Yeah, I have two things. First of all, I had hoped to mention this early, the last meeting, but it's the organizational meeting, reorganizational meeting, and I don't have an opportunity to speak at that one. But the census cards were sent to all residents in Lancaster Central School District and throughout our community. And as you recall, the district is giving this a shot, sort of like a pilot, to see how it works. Yes, it's replacing census workers, which will reduce costs considerably, but it also relieves us of the battle of trying to find census workers. We've really, really, really struggled to do that the last couple of years. So we're hopeful that more data will result through this mailing. So while it's definitely time to try this option, it still does remain to be seen if it's going to be more efficacious than sending people throughout our neighborhoods. But if I could encourage everyone on TV or out in the community or in the audience or whatever to return those cards, please do so. And if you could tell your friends and family and neighbors and everything to send them back as well, it would be greatly appreciated. Comment on construction. Construction's going beautifully. Knock on wood. I've been tweeting out pictures to the community, showing them their investment, so if you have an opportunity to check that out, please do so. There's way too much to list, but it's going well. And in the fall, the Board of Education will receive a very, very detailed report on everything that occurred. And I will suggest to President Uteig, upon his return, that he and the rest of the board consider a bus tour like we've done in October the past couple of years, to see all the great changes and improvements to our facilities. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. One thing I did not mention, Ms. Phillips has also been excused for a family obligation, so. Okay, ten point oh, old business. Any old business to discuss?
We do have old business to discuss, but I think I'd like to wait and, do you think we can put that down in the agenda so we can have maybe some more work done to show up?
Do you want to move that to?
Let's move it down.
We can do it like a... Like, do I want to move it to twelve point?
Let's move it to the last thing until...
Before the public hearing? Any issues with that?
No.
No. I have no issue with that as well. So we'll have that, too.
If they don't, then both people are until next week.
Okay.
We should have a motion and all that stuff to do that, right? Change the agenda. If you could just make a motion.
Sure, can I make a motion then to rearrange our agenda? Move our board, I'm sorry, our old business to...
Twelve point two, zero.
Twelve point two zero. In order for our absent board members to perhaps show up.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? We've already done. So, so moved. Okay. Eleven point oh, new business. Eleven point one, personnel items. Eleven point one point one. Can I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two, education items. Eleven point two point one. Can I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool, I'm sorry, on Special Education?
Second.
All those in favor? Or any discussion, I should say? All those in favor? Aye, so moved. Eleven point two point two. Can I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Do you want me to try to back up a little bit?
It's the computer.
Mine?
It's, I think it's either Dr. Valley's computer. Usually that's what it's supposed to, but I don't know. I'm not a tech guy, but...
Yeah, I don't... If anyone has any suggestions, I'll take them.
Just turn it off and talk loud.
Okay. Okay.
Try one last time, then we'll turn it off.
You still hearing it? Oh, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Eleven point two point four. Can I have a motion to accept the textbook approval for History Alive? Sure.
Just so the board is aware, this one here is, has not had a first reading. And I want you to be aware of that, because we always do a first reading and a second reading. So we'd love you were to approve it. But if anyone has any problems with it or anything else, understand that the department chair did an exhaustive search. But if we get it tonight, then we'll have it ordered and ready for the kids' first day of school.
I never understood why they came to the board anyway, to be honest with you. Because unless you teach this curriculum, how are you going to not approve it? Like, I never understood it anyway. I remember one time I was sitting, I will not say the person's name, but I was sitting next to a board member, and they're like, "This is an awesome textbook. What makes it awesome? Well, look at these pictures." I wanted to, like, flip a lid. I'm like, "That doesn't make it a good biology book." So I don't, I never understood, I get the finance behind it. I don't understand the other part of it.
Is that all it is?
Right, like, I, right. If you need us to approve the financial piece, I get it, but the book itself?
Yeah, and I understand that, too. I think...
I think it's totally up to the teacher, the committee, the...
We appreciate that. I don't want you approving it not knowing that you've...
Yeah, no.
Forgoing your personal...
I just think it's silly.
Yeah, and they think it's important.
It's a money thing. I think it's, the money thing, I get. That's it.
Sure. Any discussion now? All those in favor?
Thank you.
So approved. Okay. Twelve point oh, twelve point one. Can I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved, sorry. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point two. Can I have a motion to accept the Food Service Operating Reports from June 2017?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
That's awesome, by the way.
Yes, kudos to the Food Service Department on turning this program around. All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point three. Can I have a motion to accept the 2017-2018 Food Service Policy Statement?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point four. Can I have a motion to accept the 2017-2018 Food Service Operating Budget?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point five. Can I have a motion to accept the 2017-2018 Food Service Department Wages?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just a quick discussion. If that was contractual, why do we have to approve that?
You approve all contracts, and because this is retro, they only get a raise if they make money.
Right.
So you're approv, one of them, where you're approving the wages for next year, and then you approve the budget. I put it second, but anyway. So you'll be paying them retro for this particular year.
We did vote on that, yes? No? Okay. And all those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point six. Can I have a motion to accept the list of surplus equipment? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seven, surplus books. Can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion?
Yeah, where do those go?
Which one, the books?
The books.
Yeah.
Some get thrown out, and some go to different companies will pick them up, like Macintosh Books and things like that.
Dr. Valley, a number of those books have been recycled back to the teachers in the building, so teachers were able to take them for their personal collections.
Yeah, and I don't know if book burnings... I don't know if it's a good idea that we have a book...
The kids do it, right? At the end of the school year.
Could you see the list of books that were...
Yeah, it was pages and pages, yeah.
Do any of them go to the library? They take them out of there?
They're all just, we are...
Yeah.
Some of them weren't that old, but a lot of them are.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So all those in favor for twelve point seven? Those opposed? So moved. Mr. Sage, we are on twelve point eight. Just as a point of business, we have moved the old business to twelve point two zero. So there may be some old business that gets discussed there, depending on, I guess, attendance, so we'll see. Twelve point eight, contracts. Can I have a motion to accept the contract with Aspire Western New York for the summer? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Can I have a motion to accept the contract for Aspire Western New York for the upcoming 2017-2018 school year? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point ten. Can I have a motion to accept the budget amendment? Any discussion? Just as a point of information, this is what we've done every year. We combine the budget that the residents of the district have approved, as well as combining that with the school bus budget. Combine that all into one outstanding budget total. We do that on a yearly basis, just to combine that into one expenditure plan, so. All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eleven. Can I have a motion to accept the contract from Young and Right Architectural for the capital outlay at the middle school? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twelve. And can I have a motion to accept the capital project change orders?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point thirteen. Can I have a motion to accept the state engineering quality review for the capital outlay project of the middle school? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fourteen is a tax tertiary, Benderson Incorporated and Benderson Lancaster Associates. Can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point fifteen is another tax tertiary. This is for Holland Motor Express. Can I have a motion to accept that? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point sixteen is, can I have a motion to accept the 2017-2018 district goals? Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seventeen. Can I have a motion to accept the contract for the Family Support Center? Any discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eighteen is the big one. 2017-2018 tax rate. Can I have a motion to accept the tax rate? Any discussion?
Can you just explain it to us?
Sure. For those people who may not be aware, if you're watching this after the fact, the public has supported the budget year after year, and what they did approve was a nineteen cent per thousand increase for Lancaster residents. What the town then does is they set the tax rate. So the tax rate was set at less than that amount. It was at three cents. So what we have to do, once the town sets a tax rate, is set our amount for the taxable purposes. So we are appreciative of the town residents for supporting the budget. But we asked for nineteen cents. The town came in at their assessed value at less than that, so it's about sixteen cents per thousand savings on what they approved back in May. So it's a, it's a good thing that, you know, that the town has assessed at a lower rate. It means their tax bills for the school taxes will go up less than we anticipated just a few months ago, so. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point nineteen is information for us. I know we, we had a reserve work session date scheduled for July 31st, which we since have looked to reschedule. And I guess the point of bringing it up here is to see if there are any dates that are good as we look to reschedule that event, not only for the public, but for us as well, so. Yeah, it's kind of hard, but just, maybe only for information, just look to see if there are any specific dates that are going to be difficult, you know, out of town or other family obligations that are going to be difficult.
So real quickly for you, September 4th is Labor Day, so looking at Mondays, so that's pretty much out. September 11th could work. 9:18 is already a scheduled board meeting. And 9:25, I have to be at NISCUS, so that probably wouldn't be a good day. October board meetings would be October 2nd, we have a board meeting. October 9th would be Columbus Day. The 16th would be a good work, good day for a work session. The 23rd would be a good day for a work session. And the 30th is a board meeting. So just for Mondays, if the board prefers Monday, it would be 9:11, 10:16, 10:23.
Is there a board meeting on the 30th of October?
Yes. Well, according to my notes.
I don't know. I hope not.
I don't have that.
I thought we only had one in October. I thought we had one in October and then one in early November, maybe?
I have October 3rd.
Is that NISBA? Is that last year, October 3rd?
All right. Is it NISBA?
I have October, I'm sorry, October 2nd.
Yeah, we have that one.
You are correct. So maybe I was looking, maybe it's NISBA? Is that the 30th?
No, I think that's, that might be the weekend of the 16th.
Oh, no, NISBA, the, oh...
The convention, I think, is...
Oh, the convention is the, no, it's 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th.
So it's the weekend prior to...
So my bad. So it's looking like nine...
But we don't want it the 30th, anyway. That's Halloween.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll cross that off.
So 9:11, 10:16, 10:23, where the board can choose...
I was gonna say, Ms. Gibson, she...
I have a question, just because I was absent at the last meeting.
Sure.
So there was no timeframe on it. How long would the work session be? Is it something you can put in front of the next meeting? Like, put them together?
Prior, oh, prior to the meeting? I guess that would be up to us, how many questions we might have and kind of the discussion on what reserves are set aside. I don't think it's like a set in stone timeframe for us, because we can do it at our convenience. But I know there was some discussion on the reserves and how we use them, and...
Because we do have a board retreat scheduled for 9/9, so I mean...
And we can schedule it from there, too. You know, I guess the whole point of the 12-19 was just to have a conversation and see if there are things that would work better for us and better maybe for others to see what... Yeah, so it's kind of hard to schedule it in general. But just as an idea, just keep it in the back of your head and maybe write some dates down that are definitely bad. Like, obviously, the day before Halloween would not be ideal, so.
9:11 would be out for me.
10:16 would be out for me.
Well, that's the, 10:16 is out for, I mean, that really should be out for whoever's going to the convention, because we're going to be gone all weekend.
Right. It's gonna be a tough weekend, so.
No offense, but we're gonna be gone for four days.
We can always, we can look at... We can look at the 23rd and see if that's a good one. Why don't we look, tentatively, everyone just look and see if October 23rd is something that might work for people, and then we'll check with Patrick and Glenn and see if that'll work. Okay? Sound good? Yes, yes.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah, it's good by me.
In this room?
Sure. It'd be six for a work session.
Doesn't matter to me.
Back to school.
I'm open to anything, so.
All right, it goes six or seven, October 3rd. We'll throw it by the other two, and then I'll communicate.
Okay.
What do we say? Do we say six?
Six or seven, depending on what they say.
On what everyone is available, as we get closer, we can look at that, too. So, thank you, everyone. Okay. Twelve point two zero was the, the old business that was moved down. Ms. Christopher, did you have anything that you wanted to add, or did you want to wait?
Yeah, I think we're gonna wait. I think we should table it until, I mean, we're missing two board members, and it's important that we're all here together. So I'm gonna ask that we table, or at least my portion of the old business, until two board members are here.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
What are we table?
The old business that we added to the end. Since everyone's not here to discuss some of the old business, we've...
I asked you to wait until you, if you came, and Mr. Jackson, we don't know where he is, so if he came, then we can do it, we're missing two, so...
Sounds good. Okay. Okay. So thirteen point oh is a public hearing. Welcome to all those who have come to observe this meeting this evening. There is time set aside for public hearing. At a time, we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person who registered per policy 1514 is given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. We'd ask, we'd also like that, ask you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attacks. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be precluded from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. This evening, we have Mr. Jeff Capella.
Is this, okay, it's on. My name is Jeffrey Damon Capella. I live at 214 Argus Drive. I wanted to thank the school board for extending us the courtesy of their time. That formality mine, I'd like to revisit some of the questions I posed to the school board on June 5th, 2017. The reason why I'm motivated to revisit those issues is because the response for which technical reasons I just received today, and I appreciate the rescinding of it, came off as both, well, it came off unhelpful. Given that level of frustration, I'd like to revisit some of the issues that I brought up. Consistently outlined by the United States Department of Treasury, Office of Public Debt, the United States domestic financial and policy environment is increasingly defined by financial scarcity. Furthermore, the X-factors that underwrite such economic and financial trends are due to demographic realities, specifically an aging population, inelastic. Subsequently, barring some revolutionary technology, the financial challenges facing the United States are structural in nature and almost assuredly for the foreseeable future, going to rise. In economic and public policy parlance, what that means is, is those challenges are inelastic, meaning they're not subject to change, or less apt to be changed. Given that socioeconomic, demographic trends and subsequent financial and budgetary challenges facing the United States at the national level, coupled with the local impact those trends have, kind of bring into question the applicability of the statements I received. In that response, among other things, I attempted to pass off a citation of New York State tax rebates as exemplary of actions taken by Lancaster's school board, which sought to ensure prior optimality of any local policies initiated. It bucked past answering my questions surrounding what local policy approaches the Lancaster school board had previously enacted or envisioned in the future that would bring into, in its sustainable manner, costs and resources into balance while maintaining or increasing the quality and quantity of education services provided, particularly by stating frustration regarding what was perceived to be a lack of federal investment in education. In short, I was provided non-answers that did not address the specific questions I asked, questions for their, your convenience, and for posterity's sake, I provided in writing. Given the non-answer nature of the statements I received, I will restate the questions that I posed. One, what specific policies has the board previously enacted or envisaged for the future that will bring into sustainable manner costs and resources in balance while maintaining and decreasing the quantity and quality of education services provided? Two, while I share the frustration of the lack of federal investment in education, particularly in STEM fields, when it comes to funding streams towards primary and secretary education, federal expenditure constitutes the extreme minority of overall funding. Given the minor role that federal funding plays, coupled with the inelasticity of financial challenges facing discretionary expenditures like education, what specific efforts does the Lancaster school board envision can be taken to secure non-governmental funding streams to offset budgetary shortfalls? Three, furthermore, what specific actions did the Lancaster school board envision would insist in ensuring that the nature of private funding streams coincides with leading economic sectors, which in a post-industrial, knowledge-based society, an increasingly competitive, globalized economy, are STEM-related, or science, technology, and mathematics related? And finally, what specific steps has the board, you know, does the board envision can be taken to ensure a level of homogeneity between education policies and other local policies, say like providing local tax incentives for private entities that populate STEM-related economic sectors to invest in Lancaster and be a part of any public-private partnership? Like I said previously, I like these public policy challenges. I'm not going to go away. That said, unlike career politicians, my goal is a loyal soldier and policy analyst... That said, unlike career politicians, my goal as a loyal soldier and policy analyst is to ensure that the policy to address challenges facing the United States and Lancaster community are maximally efficient and operate under either a Pareto Optimum or a Cantor Hicks framework. I would like to again thank the board for extending me the courtesy of their time and, uh, and attention and look forward to receiving their answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capella. Okay, fourteen point oh, future presentations. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for, uh, August twenty-eighth, uh, three weeks from tonight, uh, here at seven PM. Can I have a motion to, oh, before we motion, thank you all for your help as the limited board members, uh, carried all the weight of, of seven, so. But thank you all for your attention. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Seeing no discussion, uh, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming. Have a great evening.